Call this meeting in order to the Madras City Council at seven thirty-six. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Lapine.
Present.
Councillor Townsend. Councillor Sebold.
Present.
Councillor Solis.
Present.
Councillor Spencer.
Present.
Councillor Yoder.
Present.
Councillor Walker. Mayor, you have a quorum. Yay for everyone.
Thank you. I see my cousin left, so I don't see any public comment out here. Is there any public comment on Zoom? No public comment. Okay. I would like to add or amend to the regular agenda to discuss. Should we bring, should we add the, our stance with the chamber with the county commission or joint county commission city council meeting coming up on the fourth? As the council, I'll put that as number five on the regular agenda and then we can discuss where our stance is and then we can bring on that agenda. Can I entertain a motion for that amendment, please?
I move that we approve the regular agenda with the amendment of number five for the chamber discussion as the mayor mentioned.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. It's unanimous. Consent agenda, there's been a request to add ratifying the city administrator's employment agreement for Christie Worship through October sixth.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the amendment mentioned.
Sorry, can I ask, if we, if we say yes, it means we are approving all, all numbers, one, two, three, and four, plus whatever? Okay, I am missing, and sorry, I don't see it, the last minutes to be approved from September twelve.
Those are not done yet.
Those are not.
So I would like to make a comment. The minutes that we have and when we do is practically law. Those should always be on the next meeting, always, and not behind. I'm not criticizing you. You came into a time and we did how many meetings. But memory fails, things happen. We have to have our minutes the next time, always. That's so mandatory. Because then there's what we have decided. That's what everybody has to start be doing. So I just making that comment.
I would disagree. While it is preferred, I agree it's preferred and would be better to have it the next meeting. It's not necessarily required because there's occasions where you'll have it at the next meeting and maybe not have quorum to make a motion and it goes to the next with no issue. It's not a legal requirement for it to be at the next.
I understand it's not legal. I understand that there's not the people, but it has to really, really, really high priority. When you are in a business, it's impossible to have a board meeting without having your prior minutes. Because once you say that, everything is signed, it's there. I mean, and again, it's what we have been deciding. And it's very important. You start lagging behind and it's not good for the administration and everyone else.
Until those board meetings are once a month, we're meeting a lot.
With mayor reason, we should have them because then it starts stacking up.
Okay, can I entertain a motion?
I made a motion.
Can I entertain a second for the, that motion?
Second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to the regular agenda, City of Madras and Jefferson County Fire District number one IGA.
Mr. Mayor, I don't think that we have a motion approving the consent agenda. We just have the motion to. You did? Okay, I missed it. Wake up.
Okay, back to number one. Nick?
Yes, so it's part of the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. The city has assumed that we would, in partnership, partner with the fire district for funding, where they would give us forty thousand dollars to help stand up a more robust code enforcement program. That program in general looks like we would, the city would find a contractor to be a code enforcement officer and they would provide related duties. To formalize that partnership, we've prepared an IGA with the city attorney's office and the fire district. And they've, their legal counsel has reviewed it as well. So this IGA really formalizes the partnership between the city to fund that. I would note that the funding would be prorated. So, once we start the program, we obviously didn't start it July one, so they'll pay on a prorated basis when we start incurring costs for the contractor. So, that's really about it. You know, contextually speaking, this time last year, the city council had a lot of public comments regarding, I believe it's four seventy-five Beverly Street. May I remind you about that? And so that was part of the need and comments and guidance from the council at that time. And of course, the council to approve the budget with the community cleanup fund with the additional revenue in there. So we're, we're trying to be responsive and set up this program. This IGA forms a partnership so we can put that in motion.
Nick, when will we see the start?
Sorry?
What's the start, the projected start date for this?
Well, we need, we need to solicit for the contractor. And so guidance from, from leadership was, let's get the IGA approved first and then we'll immediately start working on finalizing that solicitation. So we can, we can do that. But, you know, all goes well, maybe month, two months. It, again, if all goes well.
Nick, just one question to make sure that this has made it through legal review. So this is the final document, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a question. I support this in principle. Just curious about the forty thousand annually. So that fully covers the, the contract? Do we make money, lose money? Are we subsidizing? Are we profiting? I just want to make sure that that's where we come up with that number. Like, what's the thought process there?
It definitely does not fully fund it. So in the community cleanup fund budget, you have fifty thousand allocated for professional services. But then you also have additional expenses. So for, you know, abatement, legal, legal expenses, we're also working on right now, trying to figure out a software to manage our code enforcement cases so we can do a better job managing those cases. And also report to the council on those active and closed cases and types of cases and so on and so forth. So, the short answer is, no, it doesn't cover the costs. It covers a pretty substantial portion of it, though.
Okay, so we're going to be covering part of it. Was that just the most they could do or we just thought that was reasonable?
I wasn't part of those discussions. Frankly, the finance director, Crystal Hughes, was working with the police chief on forming this budget and forming this kind of partnership this spring. I was more focused on other aspects of the program. So I, I cannot report what the, the thought was on that, but, you know, generally speaking, we thought it may be around eighty thousand dollars a year to set up a code enforcement program with, with contracted services and, and related expenses. So generally speaking, we were trying to split the cost between the, the two agencies. This generally does that. I think that, you know, the IGA could be amended as we move forward and we understand what actually is needed to stand up the program to meet your needs and maybe the community needs. So there, there is that ability. I just don't know the resources of the district to, to be able to respond to that.
Okay, I would say I'm, personally, I'm comfortable with moving forward with this agreement since it's already kind of been made. We're going down the process. But I do think we need to be reevaluating this in the future as far as financial feasibility and carrying the weight of the overall burden of costs, et cetera, and move forward with our eyes kept on this.
I move that the city council approve the IGA with Jefferson County Fire District number one for code enforcement services and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
My second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Just to note again that the document says it's a draft, but it is the finalized version.
Oops. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you, Nick. City vouchers, Rose?
I must recuse myself as I may have provided services or goods to the City of Madras.
Thank you, Gary.
Okay, so this is the list of disbursements that were paid out in the month of August for a council to approve. Total of one million, two hundred and ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eighty-seven cents. I just wanted to highlight the first couple of items on the list. Those are capital projects. And in fact, in the capital expenditures, we saw a good start to our new fiscal year, going from only a hundred and seventy-nine dollars spent in July on capital expenditures. And in August, it was two hundred and eighty-four thousand. I just looked at September so far, we're up close to six hundred thousand. So for an eleven point three million dollar capital budget, we are off to a good start.
Excellent.
If you have any questions, just let me know.
Just a comment. I think this is the first time I've seen the city actually pay Gary's business, so. That's awesome that he's finally been able to recuse himself from it. I move that council approve the August twenty-twenty-three city vouchers as submitted.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passion unanimous. Thank you, Rose. Appointment of Public Works Director Charo.
Thank you very much. This one's pretty simple. We, we had an open recruitment for the Public Works Director. We had three applicants that we, that we brought in for interviews. And we selected Jeff Hurd. He was previously our Public Works Director. And we are bringing that selection to you for, to the mayor to appoint and the council to confirm.
Not seeing him in the room. Is he on Zoom? Like, come on. He knows how this works. He's also going to really hate me because I know he hates having his birthday remembered every year and he and I share a birthday. So I get to remind him every single year. So excited for that.
Is that today?
No.
No? Oh, okay. Oh, it's the barbecue day. Okay. Well, now we will always remember.
I'll put it on the record. It's July twenty-seventh. So everybody has to email Jeff Hurd on July twenty-seventh every year.
I'm sure he'll be thrilled.
I'll make a motion that the mayor appoint and council confirm Jeff Hurd as the Public Works Director effective September twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second. I heard Gary. All right. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Jeff, astonishingly unanimous, even though he's not here. I know. Number four, EDA grant acceptance. Michelle?
Thank you. So we're starting to get documents from EDA for the four point four million that we were awarded. So I'm just bringing this to council. This is probably one of several we will probably get. Never done an EDA grant, so not sure really how many we will get. So I'm just asking an approval for the mayor to be able to sign the document so we can get it back and get our paperwork rolling.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to note it for the record that this is a grant that Jeff Hurd applied for when he previously served as our Public Works Director. So what is it, two, three years later, we are now receiving confirmation of the award of the grant?
I think we'll give all the credit to Michelle, though. He's not here, he can't defend himself on that. I move the council approve the mayor to sign the financial assistance award for EDA project number zero seven dash seven-nine dash zero seven seven six one, City of Madras slash ODOT.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Passion unanimous. Thank you. Last one, number five. So I think I kind of told you all or gave, shared some information with you about the Chamber of Commerce after our last meeting. Since it was kind of interesting development, just talking to Heather, who's the chamber board chair, about some things that we want to talk about what the future was. And a couple of days after that, Joe announced that he was going to step down as the chamber director. The board right now is coming together to try to figure out who to, how we're going to go about to replace Joe in that position. But it was kind of came to my attention, something that was made, that a comment made there was, it might have been made by me, that our, we, city council here pays more money to that chamber than any other city to their prospective chambers in their, in the central area. And someone else there, and I don't remember who was at the county as well. I would like to ask what, as a council here, what your thoughts are and if this is something we should put on our mutual or joint county city meeting coming up on the fourth. Because I'm sure, from my understanding, the county is having thoughts too or discussions about what they want their future role to be in the chamber.
I think that we talked about this back when we did the city budget back in, in May with the big group, that we wanted to stop and reevaluate the relationship between the city and the chamber as far as the dynamic, how much money we give them, how we measure ROI. The county made it very clear that they are having similar thoughts. So I think that with Joe retiring and the transition we're in, this is a perfect time to reevaluate that. So I see no harm in discussing it with the county on October fourth, so I would be in favor of it.
I'd like to see some information presented to us on what they do, cost breakdown, staff. I mean, there's got to be things that we don't know, so I don't want to make an uninformed decision. So I would like to know more about the position and EDCO and their affiliation with that or anybody else.
It's great you bring that up because that's actually what the board, the chamber board is looking into as well. Because what, what kind of spurred this conversation with me and the chamber board chair was, what is it? People want to know exactly what is it they're getting from the Chamber of Commerce besides coffee cuppers? And that actually comment was made. What else are they getting besides coffee cuppers? It seems like there's been a big disconnect between the downtown association, the chamber, which I, which is, I believe is why the downtown business association became a thing. So it just, the board, that chamber board itself is trying to figure out what their, basically what their identity is. What is it that we provide? What can we do to improve? When I say we, I mean, because I'm the city's representative on that board. So that board is trying to figure out what can we do to improve service? What is it that we do? Yada, yada, yada. So we're kind of in the same, that board's kind of in the same boat, looking for the same thing.
I guess my question is, why bring it up at the city-county meeting if we don't have any answers yet?
Right, and they won't, and they won't, the chamber board will not be meeting before that meeting, that joint meeting, so.
I personally, I don't see any harm. I mean, Jennifer has a point, but I don't see any harm in just spitballing it with the county, see what their thoughts are. I mean, we're, more talk the better. So I don't, I think we can just start the conversation October fourth and go from there.
I have two questions. One, when does the board going to vote for a new chief?
Well, we haven't even started advertising yet. So at that time, when it, when it was, when it was brought to my attention, how should we go about looking for another director? Because Joe Carn already had his opinion of who he wanted to put in that position. I said, does anybody have a policy manual or bylaws, whatever, on there? And nobody did. None, especially none of the new people did not have. So we all got copies of that so we can make sure we're up to stuff on, making sure we're doing this correctly. We kind of kicked everybody out of the room other than just the board. So I know the board's taking this upon themselves without any direction from outside the board, if you know what I mean. Like, no direction from the staff.
So I do not know the composition of the board. Who, who are the representatives? That's one thing, because I think we have a big say and we should have perhaps more representation in there. And so to get involved in the process, I think at this moment is really important. And the second thing was, the downtown association basically, right, made a point. And I think they, as an organization, should be incorporated into the board or in the conversations we're having because they have been driving a lot of the process. So just wanted to know how we will, again, get all together.
I don't think we're going to have a bigger say on that chamber board because there's already a member, one of the members is representative from Metolias, a representative from Culver, representative from the counties and some business members. We're not going to be able to take over that. By putting more people on there as representatives, we'll be taking over the board. No, that's not what our position is. So I would say let them do what they're doing in order to find out. I mean, the, the current, the current chamber board is really trying to do things right. So I, they want to do what's best for the community, what's best for the businesses. I made it very clear to them that other people are watching, especially the city council. So next meeting that we have, all pulled, by that time, we'll be creating a game plan for advertising for a, a new director. I will, as, because I kind of have a sense that you want to know what exactly services that the chamber is putting out. I'll collect that information. You should have had it in your box. I think I actually emailed you the last, from the last meeting, the budget and that sort of thing that I got from there. Because I know that was something that was asked. But I will glean that information for the next meeting. So, am I understanding, do I hear that, that we really don't want to bring that up at the county, the joint county city meeting, or we, or do we?
I think we do. I don't see, I don't see any downside of talking about it, even if it's a five or ten minute phone, or conversation to hear what they think.
I don't have a problem with bringing it up. The county, I've actually, I think, been a strong proponent towards doing this. Months ago, this was brought up in budget. I think that we are overfunding the chamber and not seeing any return from that funding. And I think that there's other opportunities for us to take that money and put it elsewhere. But before we can make that decision, that's not a decision to be made at this next meeting. We need to essentially figure out what we want to see from the chamber and give them a timeline in order to basically get up to par with those things before we look at, okay, evaluating, did they meet our standards and what we as a city want our funding to go towards or not? That's regardless of whatever the chamber is doing with Joe's resignation. Doesn't matter. I think the conversation needs to be had. And there was conversation at the budget committee about inviting the county into those conversations so that we can together, and I would say even throughout the invite to Metolias and Culver, what do they want to see from the chamber? Don't know what their funding aspect is. And again, doesn't matter, but what are we wanting to see out of the chamber? I think that's a conversation that needs to be had. We don't really care whether they're, how they restructure, how they operate. That's.
It's more important us to know where we're getting out of it.
Correct.
And what can we expect? Okay. Kelly, can you ask the, can you put that on the agenda? Kelly, would you put that on our agenda? Thank you. Is it here at this time, October? It's over there, but you get stuck with the agenda.
Yes, we alternate. Whoever's meeting gets housed in dozens of minutes, whoever's meeting gets not housed like for thirty minutes.
I see. I get it. Thank you. It is confusing for me. Okay. All right, we're moving on to, open up, dang it, reports. Start off with Chief.
Good evening and thank you. Good news, bad news?
Oh, no.
Okay. It's not that bad. What it is, is more informative. Most of you should have got a document that looks very similar to this, has a bunch of numbers on it that runs up and down. These are a number of calls that have been taken in the new CAD RMS since our cut over June twenty-first, up until thirteen thirty-three hours on September twenty-first. Back page shows.
I don't mean to interrupt you. I don't think we have that, actually. I don't think any of us have it.
Charo, did you have it? You said you were going to throw it up here, maybe? See if you can put it up here. That'd be interesting, but while she's trying to pull it up here, one of the things that should be noted is since that period of time, what we decided was eighty-one days or something like that, we've been online, eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty-three calls for the City of Madras. So I just give that to you to let you know how much I appreciate the fact that you're supporting the PD and the fact that we're adding officers. With that, sixteenth, our two officers of October head to the academy. And on Friday, we onboard our third. Mitch is going to start his orientation. And I just got notification from the academy. He is scheduled to go in December. We're hoping for a vacancy in November so we can push him up a month. So that is really the high and low. One other thing is our evidence on Q. Spent last week working with some design engineers on the face, all the data that we want inputted. They're assuring us that it speaks to Spielman, who is the software architect for our CAD RMS. So that means it will translate that information over and auto-populate a lot of the fields for evidence entry. So that's, that's, it's good that we were, we're able to sit with them and talk with them and they're at that point right now where they're saying, sit down and tell us what you want to see on your screens, what data you want us to capture, and how do you want it formatted? Case number first, officer's name second, how do you want it? That's a big step forward to actually us rolling that out. So here is, here's what I was provided. I just was out of curiosity one day and I just said, hey, I'd like to see this. And it breaks it down. The middle column is the total number of calls received. The right column is the percentage of the total. How many percentage of calls fall into all of those categories? And there's, there's two pages to it. Some of them I know for a fact are misqualified or classified as the nature of the call. For example, we have a lot of them in there that are like unknown detail. To me, that makes absolutely no sense. And so I made that very much known to the director of frontier, said that, that doesn't tell me a thing. And what is an unknown call? Somebody's calling the dispatch center. What does that mean? What does it mean, unknown? So one of the things to look at in that period of time, it looks like there was drug or narcotics violations. We had twenty-seven of those calls. There's a lot of other things in here that you'll see. You can see our theft. That's clear on the other page. That's a high number as well, number of thefts, disturbances that we're going to. So unauthorized motor vehicles, that's a pretty high number. So I need to drill down on that a little bit more because I don't know that we really had a hundred and forty-three vehicles stolen in that period of time here in the City of Madras. It could also include recovered stolen vehicles because we've done a couple of those. Wanted subjects, there's a warrants, welfare checks. You can see that we are out in the community checking on community members when neighbors call and say, hey, I haven't heard from, seen from folks. We go and we check on those things. So anyway, those are just, there's a shoplift up there, but you combine those with thefts and it's well over, I think, four hundred. So anyway, just some interesting things to look at. Like I said, we have some refinement to do as to what the definitions of the calls. I mean, they have some in there. It's called callback requests. It seemed to be a high number of those. As I opened up those calls, I found out that somebody just needs a callback because they want to report a theft or burglary or criminal mischief. And so they're coded wrong. They actually need to be coded for the crime that they want to report as opposed to, I just want to call back and talk to somebody because that's what it looks like. So anyway, just something I'd throw out to say that those are, we're massaging some of those. Some of these are just canned reports that you just select a report and they produce the data. So we're looking through, there's over six hundred report types that can be run. So just imagine that we're spending a lot of time looking at it and saying, what is in this report? So that goes to councilperson's, Spencer's request about why is that we're not giving stuff out to the media? There is three reports in their canned database that is for media. The problem with it is, is that it takes us a lot of time to vet it. We can't just give the media names, dates of birth, people's addresses. So we have to, we're trying to look at even what the cost would be for them to build a media-specific news release log so that we could just send them the whole thing. But right now, when we're printing it out, we're finding, doesn't matter which variation of those canned we get, we have to go through and hand-redact stuff out of it before we can hand it off to them. So we're working with the Madras Pioneer, looking at what it is the county provides them and if they're redacting information out of it themselves, the pioneer, or if the county is. Because the last thing we need is, is, you know, we go to a sex abuse case and, and the four-year-old's name is mentioned and their date of birth. So we don't, we don't need that out there. So we're being very careful about what it is we're trying to provide them. We want it to be accurate. We don't need it so vague that it just says, will this happen? I mean, I could give them this report, but that wouldn't really, I'm not sure that's what they're really after. So we're trying to find and work with them. In fact, I think Lisa went over Thursday last week and just sat down with them and say, all right, how can we better feed this information to you so it's useful for your subscribers? So that's, that's a lot and a little.
Appreciate that, Chief. I just wanted to kind of echo councillor Spencer's comments about providing some of this information to the pioneer. I think one aspect of providing them some information is to kind of show that you guys are out in the community, right? To show that you're responding to calls, that you're handling things. It's just, as you mentioned, finding out how to give them that data in a way that doesn't compromise these other safety and health concerns, so.
And that's, that's probably why you said, we're, we're taking up the philosophy because we right now have somebody who can do it for us, is that we'll craft the news release before we start getting a whole bunch of inquiries. Does a whole bunch of things. I don't get calls at two o'clock in the morning from news media at my house while I'm trying to sleep asking me about a story because we've already. to sleep asking me about a story, because we've already given them the news release. And really, at 2:00 in the morning, there's not a whole lot more than I'm going to give them than what they already have. So, you'll see some of that probably happening, uh, more frequently as, as we get ahead of those things instead of getting run over by them.
Thank you, chief. Rose?
Very busy time in the finance department. I think I have four different surveys right now that I'm filling out for various agencies. One of them is for ODOT Money for Roads, so that's an important one that I'm spending some time on to get it accurate. Looking forward to the Public Works Director starting so that we can put our heads together and start crafting, um, a five-year capital improvement summary plan, report that we will be monitoring and using to eventually build into a financial forecast that we can use to better present to council where we're at and how things fit into that plan, which I know is something you've asked for, and I really am looking forward to providing that for you. I'm also looking forward to being at full staff in our, on our team so that I'm not doing two jobs and I can spend more time on the higher-level stuff that council needs to see. So, working on a lot of different angles and trying to make a lot of things happen, but I feel like we're making progress and I feel a lot of appreciation for my team and how much they're getting out of their comfort zone and helping, helping get the work done, even though it's some of the things that, stuff that they'll probably never have to do again when we have, we are fully staffed. They never complain, they never protest, they just roll up their sleeves and, and help me, and I really couldn't do it without them.
Thank you. Nick?
Not a lot to report, in addition to what we've already discussed this evening, so, thank you.
Thank you. Michelle?
Thank you. So, in the coming months, um, the, I'll be helping the utility department. We're going to be doing some educational things in the schools about fog, and not the kind that comes out of the clouds, fats, oils, and greases. So, um, we're going to be working with the middle school and some of the science teachers. We're going to be doing some media releases and, um, probably some, uh, releases in the, in the Pioneer just to get the word out, especially when, since we're getting ready to hit the, uh, holiday season, and a lot of people will be cooking, just letting them know that the things that they put down their drain does cause damage to pipes and, and different things. So, we'll be working on that and putting out some materials, and hopefully it'll get the word out.
Thank you. Derek?
Yeah, so at the airport, um, one of the cool things I want to share is the different groups that have been out to the airport that you might not necessarily, uh, think come out there. So the Boy Scouts this weekend had a pancake feed, uh, the 99s had a movie night on Friday. Today, the Department of Corrections was out doing, um, some driver training for them, so we worked with them, so they had a spot for that. That was just something that's interesting. And then, finally have the time now to work on some of the projects that have been kind of backed up. One of the things we're doing is, uh, replacing the reels, which those are the runway end identifier lights. Just had three contractors out today, so looking to move that forward and get that done. The Army's coming out next month, so that's another group. They're going to do some fueling training, so, um, just a lot of cool things happening at the airport. The...
Where'd they do the 99s had a movie night at?
Where did they have it at? Outside. Um, they had a projector and a barbecue and food truck.
That's sweet.
Yeah, pretty cool, so. Yeah.
What movie was it?
Uh, Devotion, obviously.
I want to watch that! That's awesome! You need to let us know about that before it occurs.
Uh, follow us on Facebook.
Okay. Right.
All right, so that's everything I have for the airport.
Carol?
Thank you. A little bit of good news, a little bit of bad news. I'll give you the bad news first. So I got notification from Ericsson's that, um, our holiday party cannot occur at the, um, at the air museum. Apparently, they are moving some airplanes around and they are, they have canceled all of their events. So, um, I will be looking for a new location for our holiday party. So, uh, that's a new, new event, or a, uh, something new that we'll have to deal with, but, um, nobody gets to have their events there, so it's fair. So, anyway, the good news about that is, is that they're busy and they have lots of airplanes, so there's lots to go and look at. On Friday, we have, uh, one of our P, uh, officers will be starting on Friday, and, um, also Jeff will be starting on Friday. I'm just working on our open enrollment information. Our open enrollment is October 2nd to the 20th right now. And, um, our finance, just as a reminder, our finance director position is open currently. However, we have not had a very, we haven't had a lot of response to it. Finance directors currently are very difficult to hire. I don't know if you, um, I don't recall how many of you were on council during the time that we were hiring Mike Whitfield, but, um, during that time, uh, public works directors were very difficult to hire, much more difficult than they... The season on hiring public works directors has kind of turned around a little bit, and it's a little bit easier to hire now. We're experiencing that same issue with finance directors. It's a little harder to hire finance directors right now, they're in very high demand. And, um, so, um, applications for finance directors is, uh, not high. Our evidence tech position is posted, I'm working on, uh, doing some work on our website for that. That should be, um, our website should be updated with that tomorrow, and, um, working on getting our golf course positions up to date. But other than that, that's it.
Thank you. When is the, uh, the evidence tech position, um, closed?
Uh, that one's brand new, so that one will be open till the third week in October.
Okay, thank you.
Month behind.
Kristi, you thought your last meeting was going to be your last meeting?
I think you signed the contract, mayor, and you all ratified it. Uh, just want, I, I, my, I'm going to be very brief tonight. Thank you for approving my contract extension, I think. My husband really wants me home.
You agreed. We asked. You said yes.
That's true. Just want to ask you to continue to hold times open on your calendar for, for both Friday and Monday, uh, for potential meetings. We're still working with the schedule and working through some scheduling difficulties with, uh, you. I understand the mayor may have some challenges, um, in attending due to jury duty, and so we, we need to evaluate where we are on that. So please hold those times open on your calendar. Uh, and just a reminder that next week, we have the joint city council, county commissioner meeting on October 4th over at the county.
Thank you, Kristi.
And I guess I better, since this is my last meeting, I really do need to thank staff again for all of your work and support over the last several months. It has been a tremendous workload, I will say that, um, and staff is working very hard to accomplish, um, as much work as they can, um, and in effective ways. So, I want to thank everyone for what you're doing, everyone stepping up with some vacancies, filling in, you know, Rose is filling two positions with contract help, of course, but still, that's a significant responsibility. Michelle's been filling in and helping in public works, and everybody is pulling their weight and then some. And I, I just want to thank everyone for their hard work, and I've enjoyed working with all of you, um, and I've enjoyed working with you too, mayor and council.
Thank you, Kristi. I think you're going to be, I think you're going to be missed. No, I just... I, I was thinking, I can't speak for the entire council, I like to. I like to say, I think all the council are going to miss you, that's why I think, but I personally am going to miss you. I've learned a great deal from you and, uh, I felt there's been times you've kept me in check, if it wasn't for Jennifer or Gabe poking me in the ribs, but... I, I appreciate you for coming at the time that we were really in a tremendous, turbulent state. And, uh, the whole time I was afraid you were going to run off, but, thank you for sticking it out.
I'm still here.
Kelly?
So, conference was last week, that went really well. I made a lot of good connections with some other city recorders in our region, as well as outside with like other ones that were kind of formed similar to how we are and learned that every city is ran completely different. But, so that was good to make those connections, so I have some extra resources. Coffee cuppers, we have coffee cuppers scheduled, you reminded me of that when you said that earlier. Coffee cuppers is scheduled here in, uh, October 13th, so I'll send out a calendar invite, but, um, that's not next Friday, but the following. Well, I guess it's like three weeks from this Friday. Um, also, I wanted to ask council, um, so we had talked in June or July about adding back that second meeting of the month for both council and now MRC, um, for July and August, but we didn't really clarify 100% on the holiday months, and so I need some clarification from you guys, because November falls the 14th and the 28th. The 28th, just because you don't all see a calendar, is actually the, the Tuesday following Thanksgiving week, so that doesn't actually fall on Thanksgiving week. December, however, is the 12th and the 26th, so it would be the day after Christmas. So I just want some guidance on, are we going to be holding meetings, those second meetings back?
I'll, I'll say what I think. I, I would split the baby. On November, I would do both, but on December, I would just do the first one and we don't do the 26th. I think a lot of us probably want to spend time with their family.
I won't be here for either one.
I won't be here for the November 28th.
I know that city staff typically, like, plan ahead and look at things. Is there tentative items that would need council approval?
Kelly has not created that meeting in our schedule of meetings, so we wouldn't have added items yet.
I think we should just drop that, that second meeting in November, December.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that. We can always call a special meeting if something comes up.
We've been giving you guys so many meetings to prepare for, consider this our Christmas gift.
All right, so no second meeting in November or December at this time. Good, good enough for me. All right, thanks.
Poor Gary. Do we have council online? Jeremy, Dustin, Garrett?
Yeah, you've actually got Garrett this evening?
Hi, Garrett.
Hey there, uh, listening the whole time. Yes, uh, no, no report from, uh, legal counsel. Thanks.
Thank you, Garrett. Okay, council, we'll start with Jennifer.
I'm not sure if all the council commissioners received the email, but the Oregon Business and Industry Roadshow event is coming up, it's next week. Um, one of the days is here, starting in Madras, 8:00 AM at Daimler, um, then we're going to Bend, then over to Epic Aircraft in, um, still in Bend, and then back to Bassett's in Redmond. So I believe this opportunity is open to all councillors. Happy to forward the email to anybody that's interested, but it is all day on October 3rd. So, that's it. Otherwise, I want to thank everybody, um, especially Kristi, I know that we are a difficult group. But I also want to ask, there has been a lot of the public walking through the door asking for questions on our appointment. Do we have a designated answer for that, or a timeframe for answering that question? Something that we can give them, other than the blank stare?
I, should I answer? We're still working on the offer.
Timeframe?
Another week?
We're hoping to get something, um, completed this week. Uh, we have had input, uh, we're waiting for legal review and extension of the offer later this week. Hopefully that we'll have an acceptance soon.
Are we planning on announcing that through our super reliable Pamply Media, or are we planning on announcing that?
I think, Garrett? Can you answer that?
Unfortunately, I can, I'm just not, um, up on that particular issue.
Thank you, Garrett.
That's my only question. Thank you.
All right. I want to thank you, Kristi, as well, uh, for everything you've done. We were very fortunate to have you kind of parachute in, um, and do what you've done. Thank you for extending. I know it's, I'm sure a personal hardship for you, so you really helped us out. Um, I want to thank you, chief, I love all the data. That's, I'm a data guy. That's exciting stuff, so I look forward to seeing more data in the future, that, you speak in my language. Um, and everybody else, the staff, thank you, guys. I know this has been hard and challenging, we've had kind of a difficult, arduous period recently, but everybody's handled it with grace and dignity and hard work, so I really appreciate it. So thank you all, and I guess if we're skipping November, December, which I completely agree with, then we only really have four meetings till the end of the year, so it's kind of exciting, um, onward and upward. Thank you.
Can I chime in really quick with one more update? Um, so the next week's city-county meeting, um, the, the agenda will go out for that, we're going to hold the normal meeting at 8:00 at the county. However, there was conversation with Matt Gardner and Dr. Janelle Lewis, and there was another doctor doing a rural residency program, and they were going to be doing a presentation. They were invited to do it at the joint meeting in October, however, it sounds like they have concerns of being able to get it done within our timeframe as well as other agenda items. So the county invited them at, I, I can confirm in my email to you guys when I send the agenda out, but I believe it's 9:15, they're going to present to the county, so they're asking if councillors would like to stay and hear that presentation from them, or we can invite them back another time to do a presentation with us at one of our meetings. So just keep that in mind, and I can kind of survey it on next Wednesday on how many people viewed and if you guys would like that invitation.
Is there a way to, like, um, pause our meeting and then go back into where we're still in the meeting and they can present to us at all, so we can also, or is there a re, a re, need to do that?
For their presentation?
Yes.
I guess you wouldn't be making any, you wouldn't be taking any action, so there would be no need to do that. We, we did suggest that that be part of the agenda for the joint, um, meeting, uh, but they felt that the, the timeframe for the presentation might extend beyond the time allotted for the meeting.
I'll just stick around and listen to it.
Yeah, I don't think it'll require, I can do a quorum notice if I felt like there was going to be a quorum there, but it's not going to require any decision. You guys are just sitting in as an attendance to the county's meeting, essentially with their presentation.
Counselor Solis?
Apparently, I typically say that I have nothing to report, and then I proceed to give a report, so I want to apologize to Kelly. Want to thank Kristi for your service here, we appreciate that. I've learned a lot in the time that you've been here, it's been very beneficial, learning some of the processes for the city, but also how other cities in Oregon do things. I've really appreciated our weekly meetings, those, those have been very beneficial for me, and you will be missed, so, keep in touch and, you know, come by and see how things are doing, every now and then.
Lamar?
I have nothing to report, but I wanted to say, uh, thank you to Kristi for your efforts and for keeping me up to date. Sometimes she tried to call me how many times and I didn't answer the phone, but anyways, I appreciate your, uh, consistency in keeping me up to date.
Gary?
Thank you, Kristi, for putting up with us as a council and, uh, and thank you for diving into the hard things. And I appreciate, uh, your, uh, candor and, and your help on all the, uh, things that we don't think about, uh, because we're not in it day to day. Appreciate staff, uh, they've been doing a great job, and, uh, I think it shows in the things that are accomplished in our city, in our community, and, uh, nothing to re- And, nothing to report other than that, because we haven't had a urban forestry council thing for a while.
Patricia?
I will be leaving tomorrow to Hawaii and don't come back until Thursday of next week. So I have two petitions, one IT, that you can put me in there if you remember what happened last time. And they did include Hawaii as a foreign country, so that I can be able to use the Zoom, whatever you're sending. And I was gonna ask if the invites of all these meetings could be sent again to me, and I'll put possible. I'll just look at the time, you know? Perhaps someone's gonna be 4:00 AM for me, but I'll really try. So if you can send them again, because when you say decline, they, they leave your, my calendar. So I really will try to help even the, even the county commissioner, please. Kristi, wow, I must say that I don't get easily impressed with the work of people, and you since the beginning showed such a professionalism, quickness in grabbing what we wanted as a council, and that you bought in staff. I mean, they are already great, but you were able to get them in there, and you have made this transition very successful and towards where we want our goals, our mission, all our ideas. I mean, we had so many changes. And just want to say, I mean, I wish we would have more time. I apologize I wasn't there, but you really have a lot of expertise in things and you really, really gave it to us, and I do appreciate that, so thank you. Nothing to report, as Gary said.
Thank you, everyone, all I really have to report or add is, yes, I'm on jury duty. And after, I don't know, how many years in my field, I don't know how the hell I got weeded out to do jury duty. Because of that, this is a five-day case, so I will not be available on Friday until after probably 4:30. And Monday, I get to start, if there's a trial on the next week, I'll get stuck in the first part of Monday, waiting to see if I get selected for that. So I have no idea what my Monday is gonna look like, but I'm pretty much screwed over this week, so I apologize for that. Thank you for your patience in covering me. Also, on the October 13th, I'm gonna be at the League of Oregon Cities Conference. I'll probably be on my way back though that afternoon, so I can make it for that evening market downtown, dressed up like a Viking in Angela's soap shop, so, hey, don't give me no crap, I'm coming out with my bearded axe. So with that being said, nobody has anything else, I'll adjourn this at 8:28.